I would like to call to order the meeting of the Escondido Library Board of Trustees. All members are present. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address an item that is not on the agenda? Okay. Approval of the minutes that were sent out of the August 15th meeting? Okay. It's not coming up.
There we go.
Okay. Okay, it's moved by Clemens, second by Schwab to approve the minutes of our April, our August 15th meeting. Current business?
No, she replied.
God has to tell me to vote every time. Okay.
Ron, hold on one second. Dara has a correction to the minutes.
Corrections to the minutes.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
That's okay. I didn't speak up in time. So, the first is the upcoming dates in the last time it was the name of the spell. Evelyn's last name is Prochnow. And instead of cram, it is C-R-O-U-P-H-N-L.
Got it.
That was on page four of this.
And her first name is actually spelled E-V-E-L-E-E-N.
Thank you.
What was the second one, Dara?
It's actually, um, this is actually, no.
Okay, very good. Okay, well, we'll need, Carolyn, would you like to amend that motion, please?
Sure.
With the correction? Okay, motion to approve the minutes with the correct spelling for person. It's been approved.
And just my monthly reminder to please speak into your microphone and make sure that they're turned on before you speak, so that when the recording is listened to, people can really understand what is being said. Thank you.
Okay, our next item is the Escondido Creek Conservancy Plan for a diversion pond system for Great Day Park. And, John, I believe that was something that you brought forward.
Yeah, I did.
So, John, just tell me when you want to advance the slide.
Okay, let's go ahead and keep it right here. Okay, they're actually using this slide in the presentation.
Who's "they"?
Uh, "they" being the Escondido Creek Conservancy. This architect's rendition was from the October 16th, 2016 city council meeting. The city manager at that time, whose name escapes me.
Grant Mitchell.
Gave this presentation. And as you can see in this one, number three is the new library. Under the Escondido Creek Conservancy's plan, and this same slide is in their presentation, the creek does not get widened, you see the section 12 there, because to widen the creek enough to satisfy the FEMA and everybody else would require an incredible amount of land. So, they chose not to do that in their proposal. The creek stays the way it is. In fact, they wanted to close over several sections and just go like it is elsewhere in the city. What they did want to do was put in a dam, probably if you drew the line between number five and number 11 on this, on this slide, they wanted to put in a dam there with a gate where the water would have built up would be transferred over via sluice to some holding ponds. And this lake and pond, whatever you want to call it, in the artist's rendition from 2016, they would want an area that's probably as large as number seven and eight and nine combined. Five to seven acres to retain the water and let it filter and then let it back in the existing creek. So, that's what they're going forward with, and that's the other item that's been added to the, potentially added to the Grape Day Park expansion discussion. And it's, the amount of land they want is rather significant, but they say it would also function as the catchment area, which is needed for all construction. So, it's an interesting plan. There's a lot of proposals. There's not, there's not a lot of engineering behind it yet, but this is what they're going to go forward with, I'm sure, when any discussions with Grape Day Park renovation are done. And I think at the 16 council meeting, the October 16th, 2016 council meeting, at that time, before Reconservancy's plan came into effect, everyone liked this plan, save the then-mayor, Sam Pitt. And nothing was done with it, other than put off for future discussion and get input from the community. And that's, that's where we are. Any questions?
So, John, if you talk about the dam between five and 11.
Roughly that area.
And if it's that large, does it go clear down to 10?
No, no, the dam just goes across the little creek there, the existing creek, that concrete channel, and it diverts water through probably an underground conduit over to the lake areas.
Okay, that's what I didn't understand. I thought maybe...
I didn't make that clear, sorry.
Okay.
So, is this something that the city council is talking about right now? Or are you, are we bringing it up?
I'm bringing it up because I think we ought to know that there's another potential use of Grape Day Park besides the discussions that are being had for putting in pools, possibly a library, possibly apartment structures. And one that, owing to its size, would require significant alterations of the existing plan.
Well, this, sir, go ahead.
Joanna, perhaps you can, you could help me. At some time in the past, when all of this discussion was going in the city council, there's also some talk about enlarging the swim area. In other words, the school districts were talking about some arrangement where they might have an Olympic-sized pool. Has anything ever come of that? Or is it still in speculation, discussion?
It's still in the discussion phase, but it's definitely something that the high school district is still very serious about. Their, their board of directors authorized a resolution for the high school district to work with the city on discussing potential locations of city-owned property that could be used for an aquatic facility. But nothing has materialized from that yet.
You mean city-owned property, other than park area?
Including, but not limited to.
Okay, no other questions? I'm done.
Well, this leads right into the next agenda item, which was put on by Carol. Discuss the possibility of building a new library. I mean, they go together.
Right.
So, Carol, go ahead.
I think my question, what I wanted to discuss, was kind of what role the board of trustees would have in the city building of the library? Like, would we be the ones to recommend they build a new one? Like, is it right of the law, essentially? Or, I guess this is kind of directed towards Joanna a little bit, if you know what we would be responsible for.
Sure. Well, up until this point, there, you know, there's a 20-year history of discussions of an expanded library or a new library. We've gone down quite a lot of roads in the past. And the role that the board has always played in that is to make recommendations to the city council. So, when there was discussion of making, of expanding the library on its existing footprint, the board, you know, supported that effort, the research that went into that, the funds that had to be allocated to hire consultants and architects and designers to do that. It's always really been in a support role, where the board would, you know, take a position that they're in agreement that these funds should be used for this purpose, and that they're supportive of the direction, or that they would make a recommendation to move in a different direction. If and when it got to a place where we needed community, we always need community involvement, but the, the board in the past and the foundation in the past, when it looked like we were going to be moving toward a bond effort, they were ramping up to get very involved in kind of a boots-on-the-ground campaign to educate people about both sides of that discussion. So, I would say if and when in the future it gets to that point, that's another role, an advocacy role, that the board could play in cooperation with the other support groups.
Sure. Yep.
We're headed on.
The pattern twice in the past has been that the city council would create a group of people from the community, I served on that, and many other people have served on those, to formulate recommendations and so forth. That happened twice over the time, but in both cases, that was the model. First of all, the discussion of what would the group feel, members of the community? And then also, at one time, I forget whether it was both, there was also a survey to test the waters with voters, citizens of Escondido, to determine how supportive they might be if a bond election might have to occur. So, that's been the pattern in the past, now whether they take the same...
Well, we are repeating the pattern, Elmer. We, the council just approved a, a community survey by True North with $37,000, and it's going to be, the questions are being formulated by the subcommittee of John Masson and Boca Diaz. And when they get that approved by council, then True North goes out and does a survey of, of city, of people, and comes back supposedly by January, if, depending on when the questions get formulated. They will say, you know, do they want this? There's a potential for city services to be cut because of budget issues, and they want to get the community's input on, you know, do you want to raise sales taxes to cover some or all, potentially cut services? Do you want to have a new library and go for a bond on that? Apparently, all those questions are in play, but until that gets settled, you know, we'll have that, and we'll have the answers sometime, let's say, first quarter of next year. And then, when that goes out, and then I guess we could decide what we, as a group, want to do based upon that.
I'm glad to hear that.
That's a piece of positive support. Our work on the idea.
Joanna, you know, we, they did a lot of work, and they presented proposal number one, proposal number two. Are those still on the table, or do you know?
So, that's this same council meeting, the October 16th, 2016 presentation was the reporting out of the results of that bond survey, but it was in relationship to expanding the library on its current footprint. And so, during that discussion, it came up that there was this opportunity to kind of go big and to not use the existing footprint on Calmia, but to relocate and build a brand-new library in Grape Day Park. And there was the option of putting it within city-controlled property, which ends at Woodward Avenue, or to purchase and acquire the private property in the block between Woodward and Washington. So, that's kind of the site-one, site-two dialogue. You can go back and watch that council meeting, and you can see the pros and the cons in the presentation that was provided by the city manager at the time, and the research that was done on the feasibility of those two sites. There's some remediation of the site at Washington because of the gas station that exists there now, the costs, rough cost estimates and things like that. I would argue we're at a place right now because we have a different council, we have a different council makeup than we did in 2016, that we really need to regroup with this council, and following the results of this community survey, where the community has an opportunity to say, these are our priorities, really have a larger discussion about what are the community's priorities, what is council's direction to staff in terms of how do we, you know, what do we do and in what order kind of conversation, and then where does the funding come from for that? So, I wouldn't say site-one and site-two are off the table, but they certainly were not the only options that are out there.
Well, one of my questions is, is, is there a possibility on this survey that John's speaking of, that they will have a question, which it won't say site-one or site-two, but it will say, hopefully it will say, would you be in favor of a new library if we used existing city lands versus this other one? Because it's not just a money problem, it's a time problem. I've been through eminent domain twice, and, and believe me, what you think it's going to be just doubles that, and then, then you'll be lucky. And so, I would like the people to at least give input to the council in this questionnaire about whether they would like to try to do this on existing land that they control, or land that would have to be mitigated and used in whatever means, whether it's eminent domain or offers or whatever. But the, the thing that Dara sent out gave you some wonderful information on the two sites and what would be involved if you used site. I believe it was two at that time, where you have to do a lot of sort improvements and so forth. But I'm not trying to sell one or the other. I just hope that, I would like to have that question on there, but I don't know if we have any input in that.
Unfortunately, I can't speak to the content of the survey questions, but I would agree with you that there needs to be a deep dive into this conversation around library services and needs for the future. Not only the question of city-owned versus private property, but I think it's still worth discussing a central library versus dispersed neighborhood-type services. I'm not sure that that question was ever fully vetted, certainly with the community. And so, I think it's worth having some dialogue around that. If it's going to cost $50 million to build one central library, would the community prefer that mode, or would the community prefer that that $50 million go toward the provision of library services along a different model? You know, I'm not advocating for one or the other, I'm just saying I'm not sure that that question has ever fully been answered either.
And I don't know if that question will be included in the survey. Hence the importance of what Councilman Masson and Councilwoman Diaz are doing.
Right. And I, again, I can't speak to the content of the questions, but I also would be, I think this is not going to be the end-all, be-all, one-and-done survey either, right? I think that once it's determined what the real objective is of this first survey, you know, we have a council that's very supportive of community engagement, and I think that there will be other surveys and other opportunities to have dialogue around these questions. And part of that dialogue happens here at the board meetings. Part of that dialogue could happen amongst the community advisory groups, as they're beginning to form and talk about important issues, and that information all gets filtered back to the council. So, whether it happens in, you know, the venue of one organized survey, or future surveys, or dialogue amongst community members in these type of venues, I think that conversation will definitely happen.
Ron, maybe I misunderstood in your comments you just made. Did you refer to something that Dara sent out with regard to...
Well, it was actually Zach. I shouldn't have sent it to Zach. He sent it out, it came out on email, and all it was, was a review of what happened in 2016. But it had the, let me pull it up here, just a second.
Was that sent to everyone?
Yeah.
Was that just to John's, Ron's?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it related to what I was doing for the presentation, so he copied, of course, copied Ron.
Well, it would be good if ever, it's stuff that was done way back, but it reminded you of all the things that the council previously had gone through. The proposal for one and two, and, and the reasons and the pitfalls and all kinds of stuff. I thought it was a very good document.
And it's available on the website. If you, if you go to where the council meeting videos are, you just have to click on the October 16th, 2016 video, and then click on that agenda item, and you can scroll through the presentation as well.
Would it be okay, Ron, just forward it to us, that email?
I'll email it to everyone.
It'd be easier than looking...
Yeah, I think it's...
I'm just saying for the community who might be listening to this, they can also access it readily on the city's website.
It's item 15 of that week's agenda.
But it, but it has a lot of good material about the pros and cons of both proposals and so forth. And so, I think it's good for all of us to, to reread it and see, and learn from the things that have been proposed before. And of course, we may be dealing with something that's totally different, but at least it gives you an idea. John has brought forward the idea of the, the plan that's coming forward from another group, which is a concern. And so, it's a very complex situation, and I agree with Carolyn, we've got to be right in the middle of it and let the council know that we are certainly available for them to use us as a resource we would like them to help.
Does that mean that the expansion of existing libraries out of the question?
I would say no.
Yeah, I, I don't really have an answer to that. I think that we do come at this sort of in fits and starts, and, because even prior to this presentation, probably Elmer would remember this, there was a subcommittee that was formed to assess the feasibility of moving a new library to Grape Day Park. And that was in the early, maybe 1990s or early 2000s, and the outcome of that assessment was no. So, we, we go like this with these, these dialogue and discussions. So, I don't think there's anything stopping a dialogue from happening with revisiting it being on its current footprint, but there's, and to Ron's point, it's just a very complicated issue, because years go by in between, and you have different policymakers, you have different staff that are involved, you have different community whims and trends, there's a lot of players in this discussion who have different interests and want to see different things happen or see nothing happen. There's a contingent of people that don't want any development in Grape Day Park. So, it's just a really big nut to crack, and there's a lot of moving parts to it. So, I wouldn't, I would argue nothing is off the table at this point.
Thank you.
There was some talk, I forget which meeting it was, where, about renovate the existing facility, build a new wing next to it, then tear down the old one, build another new wing, all kinds of very...
And that one, that concept was the one that got the furthest along. So, there were, there was an architect that was engaged, there were design drawings. That was the dialogue around the bond survey, was would you be willing to bond to pay for this concept, essentially, which was the expansion of the existing footprint.
Yeah, I guess we just, you know, you have to wonder, within the confines of the Brown Act, what, what conversations we can have with the two council members who are coming up with the questions. And then, when the results come out, we'll just have to see what they are and decide what we want to do.
I think the main thing we want to do is not let this be swept under the rug, and so we've got to, whichever way it goes, we've got to keep encouraging and supporting the concept that they look at, at the possibility of either expanding or building a new library, because, as John brought up, there are other groups out there that are going to be lobbying the city council also. So, we want to make sure that we don't just sit back and let them get ahead of us, so to speak. Any other comments? Thank you, John and Carol. Thank you both for bringing those things forward. Status of the Palomar MOU. That's John, that's an item that you pushed on the agenda.
And Joanna is going to answer it.
Yeah, I'll take it, sure. So, essentially, unfortunately, I don't really have much new to update you on. We're still in talks with Palomar, and the ball is in their court to provide feedback on the draft MOU that the city sent to them. We do have a phone call with Dr. Blake on September 24th, so hopefully, at the October meeting, I'll have something more to update you on.
Just speaking as one board member, when we, when we had the discussions about LS, L-S and S, not L-A-S, that was a big issue. East Escondido is not happy, they haven't been happy, and I don't think they're going to be happy until we have something out of that area to help those people. And so, I know that, I had a discussion with the mayor before he became mayor, and that was actually his idea, if I understood it correctly, to have a partnership with Palomar and put some services out there. I mean, it just seems like a very good idea, and it would, it would help mitigate the problem of having to close down East Valley a library. And so, I would certainly be in support of anything we can do to move that along, because I think it would be, I think the people really spoke to us during those, those times, even though they were talking about LS and S, they were also talking a lot about what happened in East Valley. Any other, any other questions, Joanna? So, if you, if you'll keep us updated on that, John, I think, I think we have a real interest in that. Our next item is the update on the implementation of Polaris. And we're happy, Katie's still with us.
You'll, you'll start, you'll start, won't you, by telling us what it is? Thank you. That'll help my mind set. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Katie. I'm the Senior Librarian of Technology and Support Services at the Escondido Public Library. We recently transferred from a different software management system. It's called an integrated library system, called Sierra. That type of software basically manages pretty much all of the day-to-day working from the library. Your patron database, your database of items, your ability to check out to people, to, you know, view finds, and to, you know, basically, all the runnings of our day-to-day. So, we changed from Sierra, which, when did you get? 2013?
I think it's five years old, so 2014-ish?
Okay, so we've had it since 2014, and we changed to a different system. It's actually owned by the same company, called Polaris. So, Polaris is the name of the new software system that we are using. The implementation, we started planning it earlier this year. We got kind of into the really, like, fine, detailed planning stages in May and June with our target go-live date of August 22nd. We had a couple of things pop up, and our actual go-live date was August 23rd, so the next day was actually pretty good. And basically, patrons, which is what most people are, you know, what you're going And basically patrons, which is what most people are, you know, what you're going to see as a user in the library is, the main difference is our catalog is going to look different. It has more integrated kind of fun things that you can see. So if you're a person that reads series, it'll show you the next item in the series. You can easily click on it and put it on hold or, or, you know, look at what it's about. We have the ability with this system, it's integrating better in some ways with our automated systems and with our, our tech department. So because we're members of Library Systems and Services, LSNS, they actually have an entire, an entire division of their IT that just manages Polaris. So for me, who, most of my stuff is, is if we have issues, if we need updates, if we need changes, anything like that, that's something that I usually have to do and I have to do a lot of back and forth with the different companies. And it can take anywhere from a couple days to a couple weeks. Now, because it's, we have specialized people basically in-house, we're getting things resolved very quickly, within a couple hours sometimes, within a day or two. So I'm pretty happy with the product. I really like a lot of the modern conveniences we have as staff. It's just much easier to navigate, it's easier for us to update. Patrons can get text message notifications a lot easier and with less trouble than our old system. Eventually, we're going to be integrating online payment, so if patrons want to pay their bills from home, they'll be able to do that. So we're working on that and it's probably going to be up and running in the next couple of months. We have a couple backend financial things we have to work out before that can work, but it's a, it's a feature that's just integrated already. So it's not even something we need to pay extra for.
Zach, can you show them what's on our screen?
So this is a, this is the catalog, the new catalog.
The patron facing side.
Facing catalog. So when you go into the library or on your web, at home from our website and you wanted to place a request on an item, you wanted to, you know, look for something, it's going to look a lot different than our old system. So like I said, we have the ability to kind of update and ask for things that we want and get them a lot quicker. The main search page looks like this. You can see we have these cool widgets here that we can kind of put whatever we want together. We can create one specific to our book clubs or things like that. We're kind of looking at what we want to be on this homepage right now, but right now we've just got the new videos and the New York Times Bestsellers stuff.
It really allows for, it's a better tool for marketing the resources the library has, which I know is really a priority for this board and it was a major focus of the strategic plan. So Polaris just has a better interface for the community to be able to discover and to learn how many wonderful resources the library has. And part of that are these widgets that Katie is talking about. I had pulled up a specific library record and there's quite a lot of additional information that patrons can get as well. So for example, Google previews, that's integrated. Lexile reading levels are integrated if you're looking at youth materials. So that's quite important for a lot of parents and homeschoolers as well because they have to have their children reading at certain reading levels. So that's readily accessible right from this item information. There's also links to the other books in series. So that, that was a, another kind of piece of feedback that we used to get from patrons is, well, you know, I've read the first book, but I want to know what the other ones are. So right now, it's just easily integrated into that record and you can simply see what the next books are in that series. It also makes recommendations. So if you're looking for, you know, an author, you've read every single book by this author, how many of us do that? And then you don't know where to go from there, well, the catalog will make recommendations for you, kind of based on your reading preferences. So there's just so much, there's so many more features of this, this software than what we had previously.
You know, Katie, I'm sure Dara is aware of this, but the years that I've been here, this is so remarkable that I, I keep thinking of the people who live in Escondido who still think it's an index card system. You know, because they have no need to and they have other things that interest them. How do we get this information out? This visual here to those people who have not walked into the library? Because this may attract some people saying, my goodness, I think I'll check that library out.
So we have a pretty robust marketing plan. We actually have a marketing coordinator on staff and we do monthly e-newsletters. We do a lot of social media promotion and we actually have one of the most successful social media campaigns in, in the county. We're ranked like number three in San Diego County as far as the libraries go, library social media. So we try and use those platforms to really promote. I'm, I'm still, we're still working through a couple of these last minute tweaks that are bogging us down a little bit with the system, but my plan is that once everything's kind of working smoothly, which I'm hopeful is in the next week or two, it'll probably come out in our October e-newsletter and we'll probably do promotions on social media. The other, there's another cool thing I just wanted to highlight for people who like to go kind of paperless. You can actually text yourself right from the catalog right here where there's this little picture of a phone. You can text yourself where that item is located in the library. Instead of having to write with a little pencil, you can do that if you would prefer to do that. So there's just some really cool little features in here that are just much nicer and more streamlined with the 21st century, kind of what we're used to now. I'm going to promo a little bit. So like I said, eventually we're going to have the online fee payment, but additionally, we're going to have an app, an actual smartphone app that is, that is, once again, it's one of the things that this specific software system just, it's one of the options you can have. So we're going to be working on setting that up in the next couple of months as well. So there's just kind of these staged rollouts, like we kind of had to get everything up and running, make sure all of our system was working normally and then kind of now we have the chance to look at these additional features and, and really kind of take our time getting them up and running so they're in tip-top shape by the time we present them to the public.
And then how long will Polaris, do you think, be in existence? So Sierra, we had for five years. Is it like a longer term option or what's our refresh period on our, our?
I don't anticipate we would be changing to something else. Most of what's out there in, up there are, I don't know if they, you can't hear me? You can't hear me? Okay, sorry. It's, all right. I don't anticipate Polaris going anywhere. It's been around for a long time and it's slowly absorbing a lot of its competition. If there were, were to be a change, it's kind of hard to predict. Most likely, we would just continue to go with updates for Polaris. But I would anticipate changes would most likely be a Polaris product.
How is staff done with this transition?
Excellent question. Once again, I was really impressed with this transition because I think the nature of the fact that LSNS has a full five to seven person team, which pretty much all they do is manage Polaris for all, pretty much all the member libraries of LSNS run Polaris. So it's, it's something that they really invest time into training and creating training videos. We had, Carrie Gare is the project implementation coordinator for LSNS. She does a lot of the updates. She's actually here right now. She's at the library right now. But she was here the entire month of August. She provided, we were closed on July 30th, I believe, for all the staff training. So staff came in, they trained in the morning or they chose an afternoon training. And then she was available the entire month to do one-on-one trainings. She did small group trainings on specific things. And she created some videos and we have workflow documentation, we have a manual, we have all these things. And so we've really worked with staff to prepare them. They were able to work in the training server and play around with the system before it was even live and up and running so they could, you know, kind of get really comfortable and familiar. And it's, it's been a much better transition, I think, than some of our other transitions we've had recently because we had that ability to really prepare the staff and train them. And also, I wanted to commend that team as well because there were seven people here the week we went live and one was stationed at each service desk and they were just able to help, just jump on with the staff, kind of walk them through the normal transactions and kind of keep them calm and kind of just gently show them and they were able to fix things really quickly. So I think it went pretty well.
How, it's so early, have we had any, any feedback? I mean, this looks wonderful to me. Have we had any feedback from patrons?
Yes, we've already had quite a bit of feedback from patrons. We actually did some edits, so we, you'll see this color scheme on your screen. It's got a light blue background with some yellow bars. We were kind of trying to go with our new logo. You'll see that here, the purple E. So we had a lot of purple in our initial color scheme rollout and we actually had a couple patrons complain that it was too difficult to see, so we were able to change the color scheme pretty quickly. Mainly, it's, it's that people are learning how to re-navigate. We had an issue with passwords carrying over in our old system. You could set the password if you, like, on your own at home, whereas this system, it has to be set for you previous to you logging into it. So we had to go through and kind of update people's login passwords in our system, people who are used to using our old system. So I've walked a couple people through some things on the phone, but overall, I've had a lot of people excited about, you know, like I said, the visuals, being able to see the widgets and, and being able to kind of navigate a little bit easier, so.
Other questions?
I think that there was a concern that maybe the payment function on the kiosks wouldn't work with this.
So the self-checkout machines were currently, are currently set as out of order. I had them back in order for about a week and then we realized that there was a problem with them talking. They will check out, no problem with the new system and everything syncs up properly, but we're currently having a problem with specifically fine payment and fee payment not working properly. So I've been working with our vendor, MK Solutions, pretty much, excuse me, non-stop for the last two weeks while they try to figure out why part of it's working and part of it isn't working. Specifically, credit cards were having problems and we were having difficulty with it transmitting because you guys, we removed the book on CD and music CD fees as per, I think, a couple meetings ago, but the system wasn't taking that update. So it was still charging for those items. So there's a couple things specifically relating to fine and fee payments on the self-checkout machines that we're, I'm not going to put them back in order until they're resolved.
Other questions? Katie, thank you very much for all your effort. It really looks, it really looks like I'm ready to go back and write my thesis again. Okay, our, our next item is update on the implementation. Remember you had that? We have a library director's report.
Okay, so I've divided it up to the priorities we chose for this quarter. And the first one being invite business community to provide and attend programs. That's definitely in progress. As are the adult services. Recently got a new local shop local partner, Shaky's Pizza Carler, which actually I think she's gotten even a new one since this was sent out. I will follow up next month on what that addition is. Also, she has been communicating with Chris Cochran. Thank you, John, for making that connection. And they're going to be working together for the wellness program, which is in spring. And for our inspire priority, new skills through basic and emerging technology, support staff competency through training and tools to better assist patrons was our specific goal with the implementation of Polaris staff. We had access to one-on-one tutorials, so I feel like this is a little redundant, but while Carrie was there this last month, in July, and then in the implementation progress timeline, she was there doing continuing professional development for our staff, preparing them to go live with Polaris. And I will say the other thing that was great about the team is not only were they there at all of the workstations, they were there Saturday and Sunday. So through the weekend, knowing that that would be our busy time going live. Our pro priority, reaching out to service, to non-users with services. Our youth department attended an ice cream social at Bernardino Elementary School to talk about library services and programs and to help them with back-to-school preparation. We hosted Kid San Diego Poetry Annual, which we do yearly, but it is a county-wide event that brings people into the library that are participating specifically into that, in that program, not necessarily library users, so that also extends our reach. The staff also attended the grandparents raising grandchildren meeting at the Little Well Center where they were able to invite families to the library to attend programs and learn about our services. And that was it for the last month. Our programs were a little slower than usual just because typically our recovery month after summer reading challenge. Any questions?
Any questions? No, sounds good. Okay, does any member have anything that they would like to place on the agenda for the next meeting at this time? You can always do this up until two weeks before the meeting. Does anybody have anything like, they'd like to, or do you know about? Katie?
Sorry, I forgot to mention this earlier, but the statistics reminded me. With the implementation of Polaris, our statistical reporting is quite different and there will be a different statistical layout for next month when you will receive the August statistics. So I wanted to kind of give you a heads up about that and I'll be here at that, the next meeting if you have any questions.
Okay, so we can have like a primer and go over what's what and how it's developed and.
Yeah, basically, Polaris is really awesome and has all kinds of great reporting. However, there's standardized reports that it will just automatically generate on the first of the month, which is fantastic. And additionally, as part of LSNS, we're now, we're now required to keep statistics in a specific manner for this library state report. So what I decided was I would combine the Polaris report with the statistic report for the live, the state library and I would present that so that you're getting basically all the same information that we're presenting elsewhere in the same format.
And there's not as much gap time as there was before. Wasn't it two months before and now it's, it's one?
I'm still doing, so next month, you're still going to get the August, you're going to get the two months, depending on how those, those, I would say we probably still want to do that because I'm depend, the things that I'm dependent on now that are time-sensitive are things that I have no control over. We, we collect statistics from the different departments based on their programming, their outreach, all of that. With everyone's schedules, that's very difficult to get in time to have it, you know, vetted for the, as per the Brown Act and all of that, to get that, make sure it's in there properly and correctly. So that, that's the main component that keeps me from getting you more quickly.
Well, I would rather have it more accurate than quickly, so thank you for that. Other questions?
When we talked a couple months ago, you were looking forward to being able to get reports easier and quicker off Polaris than before. Is that, is reality the same as, yes? Okay. All right, so if we come up with some crazy thing we want to see, you'll be able to get it for us pretty easy?
Well, it depends on my workload, but I will do my best. You can always submit requests to me and if you give me a good month, I can probably get you most of what you wanted to see.
Well, it'll get filtered through Dara.
If there's nothing else, we need a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Second? Okay, it's going to move right along with the second, second by Mr. Gorny to adjourn. Please vote.
Motion approved 5-0.
All right, thank you all.
I'd like to report about the John Stewart trade.
Well, I did, we did about 250 miles in 19H. And I was joking with Katie, no, I fell multiple times. My husband saved my life one time. We were going over Maller Pass and we were like maybe 12,000 feet of blocks because of all the rain this year. And I had my first lights on, but it was the second pass, 12,000 foot pass that we had done that day and my foot slipped. And I started to slide down the snow fake and he grabbed back in my backpack and arrested my fall. So despite all that, I had no injuries. So despite all that, I had no injuries, but Tuesday, I was at the gym, and I was doing like a ball slam, and I used the wrong ball, and it came up like an uppercut, and just caught me on the box of my chin. So now I have a big scar. I should be like, it's from the John Bear trail, but it's not. I know. But it was absolutely beautiful. The weather was great. We had rain in the first couple days, but not on the top of my knee, which was lucky, so.
So do you have different conditions for like?
Yeah, oh, no, about six days at a time, and then we sent supplies up ahead of ourselves. Yeah. Yeah, it was awesome.
I bet you got some rain footage.
Yeah, I have the video. I'll send that to you guys.
Sounds good.
Thank you for asking. I missed you all.